You're
Okay, you're good.
My ability to be done by 7:05.
Oh, you're go, go, go.
All right. Good evening, everyone, to the Select Board meeting for November, yeah, January, for November 16th, 2020. In accordance with RSA 91A, emergency provision as the Vice Chairman of the Barrington Select Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Governor's, with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting. Through phone participation, you can dial 1-603-664-0240. Enter conference ID 676-749-973. And for video participation, you can click on the link that is noted below, which is a bit.ly/barrsb. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Microsoft Teams. There are instructions provided on the website for the town of Barrington at www.barrington.nh.gov. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-664-0146, or email at administration@barrington.nh.gov. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes will be taken in a roll call fashion. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the Right to Know law. All right, select personnel.
Daniel, 334 Old Conker Turnpike. I'm in my office, there's no one here at the time, isn't my vote. Thank you.
George Bailey, 19 Chesley Drive, there's nobody in the, I am in my office here at the, it's the house, and there's nobody here to influence my vote. My wife is downstairs with a cat, so I don't expect anybody else to be in this office.
Jim Sikosha, 21 James Henry Drive, I'm in my house with my dogs, I'm alone, nobody's gonna influence my vote.
All right, and Andy Knapp, 96 Lindsey Point Road. I am in my house with my wife, my son, and our dog, and I am closed into the office. All right. If everyone would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to note that Chair Tracy Hardikoff is excused from the meeting, and Vice Chair Knapp is carrying on her duties in her absence.
All righty. I will start with the opening of public hearings for the sale of map 102, of map 102, lot 0062, per RSA 4114A. Is there anything from the Select Board on this?
Motion to vote.
All right. I will open it up for public comment. To see if there is any public comment on this one. I will set a timer for 30 seconds, see if anybody has anything.
I see nothing coming through on my end.
All right, give it 10 more seconds. All right, we've given it 30 seconds, we have nothing coming through from anyone. So I will close the public hearing on the sale of map 102-0062. And I will open a public hearing on the sale of map 112-0049. Again, pursuant to RSA 4114A, does anyone on the Select Board have anything that they would like to add?
Move the motion.
All right. No objections to that, then I will open the public hearing portion of the meeting, and again, give it 30 seconds.
That's not a wicked big parcel, that's for sure.
Nope.
Gonna put their rowboat there.
Half of it's gonna be in the water, though.
All right, it's been 30 seconds. Seeing nothing there, I will close the public hearing on the sale of map 112-0049. And I will open a public hearing on the sale of map 126-0018.
Move the motion.
All right. Seeing no further comment, I will open the public hearing and allow it 30 seconds for comment. Nothing coming through, Connor?
No, sir.
All right, then I will close the public hearing on map 126-0018. And I will open the final public hearing for the sale of map 273-0034.
Move the motion.
Seeing no further comment, I will move the motion and open the public hearing for the sale of map 273-0034. I'm assuming nothing coming through on your end, Connor?
No, sir.
Very good, then it has been 30 seconds, so I will close the public hearing on the sale of map 273, lot 34, pursuant to RSA 4114A. I just, I'm admitting Dan.
Perfect.
All right.
So now those are going out for auction?
No, so the Select Board will consider those once more in two weeks to decide. Those are four properties which are being sold directly to a butters. We're already under agreement with all four, as negotiated with the lands committee.
Oh, excellent.
So they will come back before us for a vote, and then in two weeks?
Yes, correct.
Yes. All right, moving on to appointments, we have the fire, EMS, and cemetery budget presentation, and I believe Mr. Walker will be presenting those budgets.
Yes, and for those following along at home, this is Section 20 of the Budget Binder. The entire Budget Binder is available on the town's website at forward slash 2020budget. And the Select Board and Budget Committee should have copies of the Fire Chief's response to the questions posed by the Budget Committee. Those went out, and the Budget Committee questions are linked to my report. And Chief, whenever you're ready.
So, two quick things about my, the history, a little bit of history about town of Barrington. In 1944, due to the increase in fire hazards throughout the town, the Board of Selectmen called a meeting on September 28, 1944, to see what action should be taken to prevent further destruction by fire. At this meeting, the Barrington Firemen's Association was formed to promote means of fighting fire and its prevention. From this association, a volunteer fire department is being organized. It is hoped that by spring, when our fire hazard is the greatest, we'll have an organization equipped and trained to cope with any emergency. On November 7, 1944, the town voted to appropriate from surplus $1,000 for fire equipment. The equipment purchased from the appropriate sum consisted of a portable hail pump capable of delivering 150 gallons of water at 100 pounds pressure, suction lines and nozzles with 1,000 feet of inch and a half, double jacket fire hose to put this pump in operation. The Firemen's Association, from its own funds, had purchased an oil tank on a 1,000 gallon capacity amount on the truck, given to the association by Leon Kayla. It is hoped to have this tank truck in operation this spring. This means a lot of hard work and cooperation from all citizens to make these things effective, firefighting force. The officers of this organization are Fire Chief Oswald Gonya, Treasurer Holland Kalif, and Secretary Harold Taylor. Just to put it in perspective, $1,000 in 1944 was worth just shy of $15,000 today. And on March 31, 1945, fire destroyed the New England Telephone Telegraph Central Switching Station, Route 9, the same site as the current switching station opposite the west end of Ramsdale Lane. Telephone switching equipment was moved to the town hall across the street on the corner of the west end of Ramsdale Lane, now a private residence, until a new masonry switching station came online. On December 18, 1945, New England Telephone and Telegraph Switching Station come online, replacing hand crank phones with dial phones. The system currently has 150 phones between Barrington and Stratford. Newspaper reports state that the first dial phone call in town was placed by Barrington Selectman Chair Harold Flower at 7:51 a.m. from the new switching station to Stratford Selectman Chairman Harry Parshley at the Barrington Town Office. Over 400 calls were placed that morning before 9 a.m.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, I'm assuming, Rick, you're starting with the cemetery budget, which aligns with the flow of the budget book, cemetery and fire?
I'm absolutely happy to do that.
Were the buckets pretty tough to haul back, then?
They were, they were. I had just turned 21 back then.
That's right. Goddamn vampire.
That's right.
Doesn't age.
You still work for Disney?
I do, I do. So on the cemetery, you'll see that we didn't change any of the, we presented a level budget. The contract line covers two items, the mowing contract with the school district, which is $10,000 in there, then a $1,680 with the sem sites. Happy to report that the sem site is now extremely close to going online. I just have to set up a meeting with the, Payton's been working diligently on that in the last couple of months. I just need to set a meeting up with the other trustees to make sure they're happy with it. But I would anticipate by the end of the year, that will be online, and people will be able to, be able to go on and find cemetery lots, and people that are buried there, family members. The maintenance line includes painting and fence repairs, stone repair, and grave filling of the graves, you know, when graves sink. Electric, pretty much, that stays pretty standard. It's the only time we incur an electric bill is when the water pumps running in the summer. Operating supplies, lime fertilizer, and those type of things. We just, we typically spend that late in the year. We bought fertilizer and lime last week. It's not reflective on the budget pages yet, but that stuff has been purchased and is in the process of, the lime's being put out now, and the fertilizer will be put out in the spring. And the improvement expansion line, while there's not all the money's been spent out of that, we anticipate purchasing gravel and materials as we continue our efforts to work on the section of the cemetery over closer to the Congregational Church. And for the capital reserve, we just asked that any money that was taken in for grave sales this year be placed in the cap, in the warrant article to be put in the expansion capital reserve.
All right. Any questions from the Select Board on cemetery?
I have one, please.
Dan, hang on, Dan was first, and then George?
The work owner, they're spreading the loamens out. Are you gonna seed it and stuff like that, stabilize the loam?
Yes, we will, whether that'll get, excuse me, seeded this fall, or if it'll be done in the spring, I'm not sure.
All right, is that a budget item of your maintenance?
Yeah, we would, that would certainly come out of the improvement expansion side of the budget.
All right, thank you.
George?
Thank you very much. As, I'll just let everybody know, last week, or the week before that, when I was walking through the cemetery, I noticed that there were some of the older stones that had fallen over, and I told Rick about it. Rick, where does that maintenance money come from, for those older grave sites that don't receive any family visits or maintenance from them? Where does that come from to reset that stone?
Well, if we can, if we can, if it's a case of, sometimes we can just reset them in place, and the school department will do that. If it has to be repaired, then we have to hire somebody to come in and do that, and use an epoxy to put it back on. And people that are willing to come out and do that are getting tougher and tougher to find every day.
What line item does that money come from, Rick?
Well, that would probably come out of the maintenance, maintenance line.
4439, thank you. Thank you, madam, I'm admitting.
Madam?
Hey, Mr. Chair, I told you I'm old, I slip up sometimes.
Look, I know I'm bearded, but man, oh man. Okay, any other questions for Rick? Is Steve on?
Yep, thank you.
Steve, are you there?
I'm here.
Perfect.
This is Peter.
Oh, hi, Peter. Is there anything from the Advisory Budget Committee that, any comments or anything you'd like to add?
I think the only comment to Rick's comment is that if the seeding doesn't get done until spring, it'll be next year's budget, not this year's budget. So it'll be a surplus that'll go to the general fund, and I'm not sure if that's terribly important. But just for clarity, I thought I would say that.
Okay. Any other commentary? All right, moving along to the Fire Department budget.
I'm just gonna briefly, I'm gonna quickly go down each line, and if you need me to start somewhere, tell me, and I'll keep moving. Fire chief salary, there was a .007 increase. That's the projected increase based on the COLAR increase. Same thing, full time hourly is just under $1,000. That's based on a projected increase. Hot time hourly, which is what the officers get paid for, there was a $640 decrease. That's just a little bit closer to being in line with what we spent this year. Respond to points stipend, state level, EMS on-call, state level. Per diem hourly, I level funded that, but it's important to know that when I looked at the numbers, there would have been a little over $12,000, a little over a $12,000 increase. And I looked at the ambulance revolving fund, which is near and dear to Peter Royce's heart. And I believe that I can take that $12,000 and spend it out of that line and still be okay with keeping enough money in there for the replacement of any ambulance and related equipment as we move down the line. So I think I'm okay, I believe I'm okay with that. We level funded overtime.
Excuse me?
Whoops, sorry.
I would like to just, I'm sorry, I have a question on 4124. Now, in your notes, Rick, you had written about the difficulty of finding people and everything else to come in and to volunteer and to be there. Is any of this money going to help you with that, to help bring more people in?
That per diem hourly line is when we pay for daytime staffing to, because either people are not available because they're working out of town, or they're not available because they're spending time with their family.
Thank you.
If I could just ask the Board to make notes of their question and ask them at the end, that way Rick can get down through his line items, and then we can address the questions all at once.
Very well, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
No problem, thank you.
No increase in overtime, tough line to budget for, but I think I'm okay with that, based on what we spent this year. Holiday pay, stayed level. Earn time buyout was a slight increase based on what I projected we're actually gonna spend. The employee benefits showed a $2,000 decrease. I'll defer any questions to the benefits line to Lynn, because I don't understand any of it. So rather than me trying to why and tell you something that's not true, if you have any questions on that, please, we'll get her involved. The contract line shows a $4,200 decrease. That's primarily due to two things. I was paying the stat team as a contract out of that line, and the wind felt it was better spent out of the dues line, so we took that $2,900 out of contracts and moved it over to dues. And then there was a $1,570 decrease in the UNH dispatch contract line, because the contract was renegotiated and graciously agreed to a multi-year contract, which saved the town a fair amount of money. The e-Dispatch line is what most of the people are notified, it's a phone app that the town pays for. So firefighters and EMTs are notified through their phone when there's a call. The Enfas reporting is a system that we have that we're obligated to notify the federal government of all our ambulance and fire calls. This is an outside software company that provides that, as well as other software services that we participate in. The hose testing, we do about 5,000 feet of hose a year that we test to make sure that it's not, that it's safe to be used in an emergency. Contract, the cardiac monitor contract, again, is a yearly service contract. They come out and check the thing to make sure it's meeting the needs of the town. And part of that contract is, is that if they have to come out and make repairs to it, they leave us a loner monitor. Ladder testing, again, is done to make sure that our ladders are up to speed, so that in the event of something happens, we can show that we've done the testing according to NFPA. The air gas lease is our oxygen bottle, our oxygen supplier. And the SCBA assessment is through Seacoast Chiefs. That's what, that assessment is what pays to keep bottles and the air van, air cylinders, the stuff up. EMS contracts, that's a 37% increase. I really felt that it was gonna take me about three years to get my, wrap my head around being able to provide an average value for that. The EMS contract is two things, one is the billing contract that we pay quick mid, so when they, they get a percentage of all the money collected on behalf of the town. So we gross budget. They get five and a half percent of whatever they collect. So if we're busy and they collect a lot of money, then their bill goes up. The other piece of that is that if Frisbee Dover Fire or McGregor EMS provides an intercept service for us, if they come up with a paramedic to jump on our ambulance and provide a more definitive care for us, then there's money gross budgeted there for their services. And that line's gonna be overspent. I anticipate spending somewhere in the low $30,000 before the end of the year. So hence, that's why there's almost a $10,000 increase in that line. Equipment maintenance, we level funded. Vehicle maintenance, I felt comfortable that we could drop 2,500, based largely on the fact that we're, the new tanker will be here. And the vehicles that we currently have in the fleet are in relatively good shape and well-maintained, so I don't anticipate any big expenditures on vehicle maintenance over and above what something could happen. I mean, obviously, the vehicles and something could break down, but I don't anticipate any issues. So I felt pretty comfortable that we could reduce that by $2,500. The communication line, we increased by $250 just because there was minor increases in the cost of the dedicated phone line and the cell phones and the repeater line and the dedicated emergency line that runs between Barrington and UNH dispatch that we're required to have as a backup to 911. Conferences and training line, we level funded that. You'll see the dues and fees line went up about $3,000, and again, the vast majority of that was because of moving from the contract line over to dues and fees to more accurately reflect what we're doing. Mileage, office supplies, operating supplies, all level funded. Protective gear was level funded. Equipment line, we dropped 3%, we went, dropped $400 on that. Fire and EMS grant match, we level funded. W Chief stipend is just left, there was a placeholder. EMS operating supplies, emergency management grant, and the fire prevention grant lines were all level funded. There's a little bit of a chance that the emergency management grant might be a little bit overspent, because this is a year that we should be doing the, one of the updates hazardous, plan update, so that we may end up spending a little bit of money, but it'll be small out of there. And that's pretty much what I got.
All right, questions from the Board?
I have none.
Anyone else? Okay, I do have a question. Rick, under the 41, 4351, the fire EMS AMB contract billing, I'm just curious if, if using, the use of the ambulance revolving fund would be a good place there? place there because we're actually, we would be using that as the part of the offset on that contract billing line? Would that make sense or no?
Certainly it would. Well, I should say, I don't, I don't think it matters to me, but I don't think that we're going to bring in enough money that if we, if we took the, the thirty six thousand dollars and spent it out of the revolving fund, that somewhere else I would have to add gross, line gross fees into the budget to, to make it up. Because I think with the, making sure that we're, we're currently doing thirty six hours a week of salary and benefits out of that line and trying to maintain twenty five or thirty thousand dollars that goes in every year for the replacement of an ambulance when that comes down the road. So I, I think it would make it tight, but if you want me to go back and look at that, I can.
It was just one of those that as we talked about contracts and billing, I, it was, it popped out that we have that revolving fund and it just kind of aligns with what the use of the revolving fund is. So that was my thought.
May I make a comment?
Yep, give me one second, Peter, and I will ask for comments from Advisory Budget Committee. I just want to let the select board finish up.
I'm going to say, Andy, that I could certainly sit down with Peter. He would certainly have a better handle on. He knows exactly that fund every, right down to the penny and every bit that goes back out. So he would probably have a better handle on whether we could accomplish that goal or not.
Yeah, I'm sure he'll have something for us in just a minute here. Dan?
Has any thought gone into the firefighter is doing detail work with traffic control if the Barrington police department cannot fill the opening?
I know you and I talked a little bit about that. That's something I would need to, one, sit down and talk with Chief Joy about. And number two, see if there's any interest on the part of my people. Most of my people work during the day or not available during the day, which is when most of the details happen. So certainly I'm happy to sit down and talk to, about that. The funding for that type of an event comes out of the detailed revolving fund. So it doesn't, in effect, really have any budget impact for me or.
Well, it's added bonus for your employees. They wanted some extra money, they could earn it.
Yep.
And it wouldn't be a burden on anybody to fight about it.
Certainly. I, I, I will certainly reach out to Chief Joy and see what the logistics of potentially doing that might be.
Are they insured for that? Chief, do you know?
Yes, they would. Anytime they, anytime our people go on, they'd be covered by the same workman's comp as they would if they went to a, an emergency.
Then for?
Jim, just so you know, I don't know if you turned off your camera or not. I just can't see your mug. So if you're waving at me, I won't see it. Are there any other questions or, oh, there you are. Are there any other questions or comments from the select board?
I have none.
All right, Peter?
Yes, thank you. Relative to your comment about perhaps taking the contracts out of the revolving fund, I just wanted to comment, I had done an analysis and I'd be glad to send it to the board, but I started in 2018 for all the deposits and what we put into the revolving fund. And in 2018, we put in fifty nine thousand dollars. So again, you can consider already that thirty six thousand would be a big chunk of that. In 2019, Rick would have to respond as to what he asked for money for, but we only put forty four hundred and forty nine dollars in the revolving fund in 2019. And so far in 2020, we put in forty four thousand nine fifty four. So even though there's two hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars in that account, I would not be supportive of saying, let's take the contracts line and take it out of the revolving fund because it principally be most of what goes into that fund all year. And I think if you did a three-year average, it would be more than what we've put into that fund in the last three years. So there are other uses of that fund. I'm supportive of incorporating the fire department with that fund, but I'm not supportive of taking the contracts line from that fund.
Other, do you have other comments or questions?
Me personally?
As the Advisory Budget Committee?
Yes, I do. Because I still don't understand why there's such a significant increase given the level of spending this year. And Rick did a great job responding to our questions, but I, I must say, I still don't understand why that line has to go up by ninety six hundred and something dollars.
Peter, I think the short answer is that I, I misjudged the amount of times that, that we would be bringing a paramedic in to the town. And there's, that's one of those kind of things where you just, you, you look at your numbers and you try to base it on a two or three-year average. But even by doing that, it's hard to, you never know what's going to require a paramedic intercept. And so I, I think to begin with, you know, the number I put in for 2020 was probably a little bit under budgeted.
Yeah, but it looks like, according to the budget I'm looking at, which could be erroneous, and so you have to correct me, but it looks like there's fifteen hundred dollars left out of a twenty six thousand five hundred dollar budget. And then it's proposed to go up by ninety seven hundred and eighty four dollars. And I'm not really sure I understand that. Is, is there something wrong with the numbers on the budget that we see?
Current expenditures are outdated, Peter. I think Rick's probably looking.
So am I. That's okay. So what are the updated numbers, please?
Yep, one second.
And that's what I couldn't understand is why there was such an increase when it looked like there was a surplus.
Peter, if, if you go back to the best numbers I have, if you go back to your, the, the notes that I sent back to you answering your questions. I took the money. My numbers right now, give me a half a second. According to, according to what my numbers show is that I've spent about twenty two thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and thirty three cents. And that is.
Can you, can you say that number again, please? I'm sorry.
Twenty two thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and thirty two cents. And that's based on nothing beyond September. So I'm going to get in October, I'm getting three months bill for quick mid claims, which they're averaging about six hundred dollars a month, real rough number. I'm going to get three months of McGregor. They're averaging about twelve hundred dollars a month. And then Frisbee is running about, they're running about fifteen, sixteen hundred bucks every two months, so another thirty two hundred dollars.
Okay, so maybe just a lag in where the billing is, right?
Yep.
Okay.
My guess is that, that I'm, I'm going to have somewhere between eight and nine thousand dollars more spent out of that line before this year is over.
Okay. And again, I just couldn't understand with what I was looking at in the budget. It looked like a surplus that I'm going with. So why are we looking for more money? But I understand what you're saying. So that's a good explanation. Thanks, Rick.
I'll never, I'll never play numbers with you, Pete.
All right. Anything else? Comments, questions?
That was the brunt of what the ABC had.
Okay.
Andy, we've kind of gone both ways with previous budget presentations while discussing the Warren articles. I think it would be worthwhile if the Select Board or Budget Committee had any specific questions about the Warren articles Rick's bringing forward, just to mention those now. I do plan to have a, a full discussion of all Warren articles at the November thirtieth meeting, but I expect that to be more of a summary than digging into the substance of each one.
I'll be candid, I have not spent any time looking at what Rick proposed for Warren articles, so.
I have not either.
There's nothing new. The only thing that's different than last year is that the contribution to the fire truck capital reserve increased five thousand dollars, which was the plan put in place by the Select Board and Budget Committee last year. Everything else remains the same. The Budget Committee had some feedback about the fire truck capital reserve being a little light on funds in about five to eight years. Correct me if I'm wrong, Peter?
No, we were concerned about specifically 2026 and 2032.
Six years.
Twenty six, it looked like we were going to be real short or marginal, but by 2032, we looked like there was a catastrophe. But again, I think Rick in his reply to us was very specific about maybe there's something creative he could do in the interim, like with not just buying a whole new truck, but maybe buying just a cabin chassis or something else like that. And personally, I was very satisfied with that. I don't know how anybody else felt, but I thought that was a great response.
No, I know I was good with it. Anyone else have any comments?
So we'll review them in total on November thirtieth, but good to just get a little bit out there. I see a hand up, I think from Dan in Manstrek, another member of the Budget Committee.
Dan, Danon?
Dan.
Okay. Dan, are you there?
I am, I am, but muted. Now I'm not muted, I hope. Peter, Peter said he thought it was good. I would agree through 2026. I still worry about 2032. I'm not sure that I personally will be terribly worried, but I am a little concerned out at, at that level. And even, even with Rick, even with making it, you know, making do, I still think we're going to be really short come that time of year or that year. So I would suggest a little higher capital reserve.
All right. She had the feedback.
Yeah, I, I don't totally disagree. And I, and I think that one of the things, again, I open thirty two, I'm not the one sitting here presenting this to five people. I hope it's somebody else's job by then. But I do intend to be still a taxpayer, good Lord willing, so that would be an interesting thing to me. But yeah, I, you know, I'm not sure we're going with the cost of fire trucks and, you know, it wouldn't surprise me if in 2032 that we're talking about three quarters of a million dollars for an engine. And again, you know, do we continue down the path that we are now? And then if the economy, if the economy gets better and, and people are able to afford more money, do, is, do we, do we as a budget committee and a board of selectmen and the department head look at perhaps, you know, hey, things are good right now. We could put a little extra money in there? I don't know the answer to that. Maybe, maybe lease purchases when you start looking at three quarters of a million dollars. Maybe the town's going to have to look at lease purchases. Again, and, and we certainly got a few years. Perhaps we can spend the next year looking this over and, you know, maybe we're going to have to make a tough decision as a board of selectmen and a department and Budget Committee to look at trying to put more money away, maybe taking money away from different Warren articles and trying to put a little extra there. So I do hear that and it's near and dear to me. And I certainly don't want to leave a mess for whoever's coming along behind me. So certainly we'll keep an eye on that.
Select personnel?
And by thirty two, there'll probably be electric fire truck. The big push going on right now, faking out diesel engines, go, go electric.
Get your Duracells ready.
I'll donate some double A's.
Jim, I see your lips moving, but you're muted.
If you guys want to go solar, I know a guy.
Oh, boy. Shameless, shameless. All right. Any other comments for, questions for Rick regarding the fire truck or the fire budget or capital reserve items?
Just an offer that if the board would like to see what the ABC did relative to where we felt there were shortages or at least issues, I'd be glad to memorialize that and send it off to you.
That would be appreciated. Thank you, Peter. All right. Moving along, comment, the first of two. Rick?
If I may, because I haven't talked enough, Connor, were you going to talk about the stuff a truck or is this an appropriate time to do that?
I think you can do it now. I made myself a note to bring it up during my report because I neglected to put it on the agenda, but if you want to hit it now, we can get it out of the way.
So typically we, the Fire Association participates with a stuff a truck. We collect toys and food. And we have traditionally worked in partnership with the, the school and the Dancing with the Stars, which is typically the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And it's been usually successful in providing extra food to the pantry and toys to the women's club who spearhead the underprivileged Christmas here in town. So the association talked about the other night, and with your blessing, we'd like to do a two-pronged approach. We'd like to advertise collecting toys and food, kind of doing a stuff a truck here at the Public Safety Building on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. The association is willing to purchase some signs and get them put up, not on telephone poles, so that people can make donations. And the other part of that, in speaking with Aaron over at the Public Works Garage, they're willing to put a bucket out and assist with people that are using the transfer station that want to make donations, either toys or monetary or food and drop it off there. They're willing to work in conjunction with us and help to potentially make the underprivileged Christmas bright for the kids here in town.
All right. Does anyone on the board object, have any objections to that?
I have no objections.
Select personnel?
I sent an email earlier about Legion. I know the Marines are big into it. But I just had a thought here tonight. Know the toll you put up, the stuff a boot or whatever? Do we do that? Would that be better with social distancing, people driving by instead in parking lots?
Yeah, I mean, why the stuff of boot, stuff of boot has done so well for much, much of times, we normally tried to nail the people that were going down to the BYA day. But certainly with social distancing in place, our people would be out there with masks and we would leave the, we'd leave the buckets with the opportunity that we could safely step away and people could come in and drop the toys or food off and we could stay away from each other.
Thank you. Is there any, I'm assuming we don't need a vote on that. That's just unanimous support?
Yep.
That's us.
Right here. Okay.
Very good. Any other public comments?
I don't see anything coming through on my end for anybody, which it doesn't look like category, but hasn't joined us before. If you're on a phone, press star six to unmute yourself. If you're on your computer, you can raise your hand or type in a comment. I think we're good to move on. There'll be another public comment at the end.
All right. Review minutes for November ninth?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. Roll call vote?
Aye or aye?
Aye.
Of course aye.
Aye. All right. Staff reports. Napa, aye. All right. Staff reports, Administrator MacIver.
Yes, thank you. Everything I have on the agenda of substance, I did want to announce in public, just finalized in a contract at the end of last week, is the auction for the land sale. We'll be selling six properties and one cabin chassis of an old fire tanker on December 12th, which is a Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at the ECLC. Registration starts at 9:30. The information, detailed information will be available on the website. It's also on the auctioneer's website. All questions are being directed to the auctioneer. And if you have, if any of the board members have a question, happy to talk in detail. Or if the public has questions, check out the information that's available online, then let us know. And I already touched on this, but I wanted to let you know that I plan the November, or yeah, the November 30th meeting, our next meeting, the budget presentation we're reviewing is the Recreation Department budget, which as you'll remember from earlier in the process, they removed all of their budget requests other than wages and benefits. So the only operating budget request from the Recreation Department is wages and benefits for the Director, Assistant Director and Administrative Assistant. So that reduced their budget by about $7,500. They didn't budget a lot in their operating budget anyways. But I suspect that will be a relatively short budget presentation. And so I'd like to also program a full discussion of all of the Warren articles. So some of the pieces of information I'll make sure to get out plenty ahead of time is an in-depth review of estimated revenues for 2021. I know that has a lot bearing on the board for what we're going to ask voters for once we get an idea about how much we might lose from the state. So I'll have that for you. And I'll also have a more clear picture of what our, what we're expecting to contribute to unassigned fund balance, which is typically the funding source for all of the Warren articles at the end of this year. So Department Heads just updated their year-end expenditures for me. And so I'll be compiling that and presenting that at the November 30th meeting. Reason I mention it now is because if there's anything else that you'd like to see in order to consider the Warren article requests, please let me know ahead of time. So hopefully we can get those Warren articles finalized at that meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Municipal Office Administrator Cottle?
Really quick, just three things. The meeting minutes that were just approved, the 2020 equalization certificate and the Stratford County tax apportionment receipt. That's it.
All righty. Under old business, the Town Government Facebook page, Connor, do you want to?
Yeah, so just shameless plug that I intend to do at least through the end of the year. So we're glad to have continued growth and engagement on this page, providing information to the public. We intend to profile each of the six lots that will be sold at auction with pictures and additional details. So that'll be a great way, you know, feel free to share that with folks that you know are looking for property in town or might ascend, might attend the auction. And as always, if you have questions or suggestions for content, definitely let us know.
All righty. And then moving on to new business, the 2019 Financial Audit Review. I just had a question on that. Are, are we taking proactive measures to solve the two areas of concern that were raised in the audit?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to elaborate on that or?
Yep. So you have a memo that is attached to my report that's printed out, which highlights the steps that the Finance Office is taking. And the, the one that is going to take, that we hope to implement by January 1st is having the Treasurer appoint a Deputy Treasurer, our Municipal Office Administrator, with the essential duties of the Treasurer to include use of the Treasurer stamp to make sure that the recommendations of the auditor are satisfied and not having that stamp in a safe that's also accessed by folks that process the, our accounting software and the general ledger. So that's detailed, the memo. Happy to answer any other questions that the board may have about the audit or our intended approach.
The, just my, my general comment on it is, love the idea of having somebody in-house who acts as the Deputy Treasurer, but also from a concern standpoint of checks and balances, having the Deputy Treasurer be a person who reports up through the organization of the town, I don't think is usually a good decision, where with Peter being an outside resource, it creates the check and balance necessary from a government administration end.
Yeah, so it's a decision that the Select Board made to have that position be, also be the Deputy Treasurer. So certainly the Select Board can reevaluate that at any time. When we had first considered it, we, we spoke in detail with our auditing firm, actually another auditing firm, our attorney and others to evaluate if there were any concerns. And kind of everybody involved felt like it was a great solution. Most municipalities actually have their Treasurer on the payroll as a full-time or part-time employee, you know, more so than we have because it's such an essential function. We're very, very fortunate in town to have Peter, somebody that dedicates so much time for such meager compensation. But certainly, a lot of communities make the decision to bring it in-house out of necessity to get the job done. So like I said, the, the board had the, you know, the board weighed in in making that decision. We feel like we've set up the internal controls and our auditor feels like the internal controls are in place so that it can work. But we can certainly evaluate if the board would like to.
No, I remember it coming before. I just, that was a concern I believe I had back then and it's still a concern that I have now, so. Any other comments from any of the board?
Negative.
So overall, and for the community's benefit, feel free to review the full audits available on the town's website. Overall, it, it's a reflection of the tremendous work by the Finance Office. If you look back, and this is a great way to do it, look back through the audits of the last three years even to see the audit that we have now, how clean it is, how few adjustments are necessary. We're, we're in a lot better place now. Not that we were in a bad place before, but we're, we're able, we have the capacity to make improvements, which we previously required the, or relied on the auditor to make. We're doing ourselves through our regular operation. And that doesn't happen by accident. That's a lot of hard work by the Finance Office. So overall, it's a glowing reflection of, of their hard work.
Yep, I would agree. The, the shortness of the memo speaks for the quality of the work being done.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Moving on in new business, the, a, there is a reverse involuntary lot merger for map 206, lot 15. Anything from the board on this? You've got a, a small forest of paperwork on it?
I have no complaints. I have no questions.
I, I don't have a complaint. I have a general comment on it, or I guess a question is, and my, my question on it is when this happens, I'm assuming there are years of them paying what ultimately is a merged tax rate on the lots as opposed to individual tax rate on the lots. Is there any rectification or means of correction on that? Or does someone just get to kind of ride the pony on that one? And until they hit the point where they don't want it anymore because there's a better use for the lot, they go back and say, hey, I never wanted those merged and here we are.
In this case, they, in this case, they were the same because they're current use land. So current use is so much an acre, whether you've got 10 acres of current use, a 50 acres of current use to pay the same tax rate.
Right. Now, I'm assuming, I, I don't remember seeing the lot size on all of these, but are all the lot, but it, but in order for it to be in current use, you have to have a 10-acre minimum and some of these parcels are smaller than 10 acres.
They can be separate lots.
It can be, it's just current, abutting current ownership. They can be separate lots of record. They just have to be abutting lots that the owner owns.
They can even be in separate towns. You can own five acres in one town and six in another and have the, the collective in current use. But Andy, you, you asked a really good question. And what's interesting to me is way back when, when these lots were merged and others were merged, the municipality, the town is the one that did it. And presumably it was at a time when the, when the assessment on a vacant lot, you know, it wasn't, it was deemed to be in the best interest of the town to have the convenience of them be one lot. But anyways, yeah, so as separate lots, certainly there's an opportunity to derive more tax revenue if it's not in current use.
Yep. All right, Dan, you had your hand up?
Well, I looked through the acreage. At the beginning it says six acres. But then you got different ownership, different names, different buyers. This goes back 67 to 79 and so. So what is acreage on it? Do we know? There's no tax maps on it.
You want to know the total acreage of the properties that are being unmerged? So I think you want to look at the plan.
Connor, you could just pull up the tax code for that one lot because right now it still taxes one lot of record and it has the total acreage on it.
Oh, that's a good point. Yeah, I was looking for the plan that they, that they referenced, but that's probably a faster way to do it. Does that make sense, Dan?
Yeah, I just, I, I looked through all of it. I couldn't figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, it looks, looking at it, it looks like you got one that's 2.54, one that's 51 and change.
And I'll be honest with you, Dan, I don't think the fact that it's not detailed is on accident. And the, the reason is all of the deed research isn't a survey. I mean, a sur, hiring a surveyor to go out there and survey the property would give you an accurate acreage. So I have 41 acres as, 41 and a half acres is the total lot.
So it's based on the paperwork that's in here, it shows 44, 10.56 front acre, rear G is 6, F is 7.44, and then it looks like WF7 or something is 220 or 220.
It's not uncommon at all for deeds even to show acreage that a surveyor would survey and find the acreage to be different.
Okay. It wasn't like, my, my original question wasn't necessarily geared anything to, to this decision to unmerge of lots. It was just, we've had several of them come up and in my pea brain, I started thinking about the tax impact and the value that the property owner can gain for years and years versus what the, the town gives up in it. And not that somebody shouldn't have it, but if in that case, it becomes a, just a bigger question. Dan?
Since I'm on the conservation, is there a, be a current use penalty on it?
I do not believe it's exiting current use. But if it does, if it does exit current use because it no longer qualifies, then there would be a land use change tax.
Question? Select person Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question would be to Connor is that how many other pieces of property have we involuntarily merged? And would it behoove us to go along with what the Chair was saying is that if we look at taxes, for us to unmerge all of those pieces of property and then turn around and just tax them as the way they are? Can we do that without their request?
I doubt it. I, I'd be happy to research the statutes.
I would like that.
But for the exact reason that you're suggesting we do it, I sus, I suspect that we can't.
And for the exact same reason why I'm asking that is because as Andy has said, you know, the, the money that the town is losing. So if you could look, research that, I'd sure appreciate it. Thank you.
An involuntary un-merger.
Well, at that point, I believe what you'd do is you would send them a note saying, hey, we realized we involuntarily merged your lots. Us to unmerge them at this point, or would you like them to be officially merged?
And the problem is, it's not like we have a list anywhere that says which lots were voluntarily merged. So the statutes, and the statutes know that, and they say that the, so our staff have to research each property to, to check our records to make sure that they weren't voluntarily merged. So it, it's not, there wouldn't be an efficient way to do what you're asking, even if we were able to.
Gotcha. Select person there?
Clarify, the state came forward today, wait a minute, this was done wrong, you can petition have unmerged. Was that last year or the year before? We did a whole bunch of them.
So it wasn't, it wasn't long ago. I mean, it was a couple of years, it was a few years ago now that the, that the state put that statute into place, allowing involuntarily merged lots to be unmerged. And originally, when the state did that, they put a time limit. They said by December of, I think it was 2018, you had to have requested it. Then future legislatures said, no, we're going to continue extending the deadline. I, I forget if they eliminated the deadline altogether, if they pushed, they keep pushing it out a couple of years. But no, there was definitely a big wave in the beginning because there was a lot of push. Because what communities were saying is, no, if you want them unmerged, you have to go through the subdivision process. And what the owners were saying, well, no, these were lots of record and you made them one lot of record instead of multiple lots of record. So it's a, it's definitely a nuanced problem, but I think we've gotten into some weeds of it.
Yep. So kind of moving on from that, I'm looking for a, a motion to reverse the involuntary lot merger for map 206, lot 15.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote.
Aye or aye?
Bailey, aye.
Scott, aye.
Napa, aye. All right. 2020 preliminary assessment ratio. Connor, would you like to talk about this?
So you have a memo from the town's assessor in your packet. Basically, the, what it says is similar to what happened in our last cycle. You know, we're on a five-year cycle where we're required to do a full revaluation, which we did in 2019. In between those five years, especially in a hot real estate market, which we are still in, values tend to change a lot more than just five-year updates can keep up with. The last time you'll remember, a lot of you will remember that we did the statistical update in 2017 to catch ourselves up. So the assessor, based on our equalized ratio this year, is suggesting we do the same thing. It's basically a partial revaluation. What they do is they take, you know, they monitor the sales from the past year and they look at which categories of properties are, are most separated from market price, what it's selling for and what the assessed value is. And they do a targeted revaluation for those properties to better align those properties with market value. So our assessor's preliminary equalized ratio shows us at 90.3%. If we get outside plus or minus 10%, DRA, you know, the, during our revaluation, that's when we start to be required to come in closer to 100%. You know, they give us that plus or minus 10%. So we're on the cusp anyways. And, you know, anybody who pays attention to the real estate market, this isn't a surprise. Houses continue to sell for far, far more than they're assessed for, and a lot of times far more than they originally go on the market for. And so this isn't, not looking for a decision tonight. There's still some details that have to come out. The state has to review this. But I wanted to make sure to start the conversation with the board that we're looking at a, a partial statistical update in 2021 to keep up with our assessed values so that in the next revaluation, we don't have a huge spike in assessed values, that we keep up with it through the process. Happy to answer questions?
Hearing none. We will move along to the intersection of sidewalks and safety project support letter, which I'm not sure if everyone's seen, but I sent a memo to the board and to Connor today, as well as Jamie Jensen from the Planning Board sent a letter strongly supporting the idea of moving forward or supporting the consideration of sidewalks to enhance the intersections of Route 9 and 125 and areas moving out from there. With that, is there any questions or comments from the board? Select person Bailey?
Thank you. Thank you. On, uh, what I was reading, someone was, uh, talking about going all the way down, uh, to the school. Is that something they want to do is from the corner all the way to the school?
Yes.
All right. How, what, what's the cost going to be for the town?
A potential twenty percent match.
On what, sir?
Um, I have to double check the numbers. I believe it was to the tune of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But you have to remember, we're talking five to ten years from now, so those costs are going to compound. Andy, do you remember, and it looks like we have Marcia online, what the, the most recent cost estimate was?
Um, I do not remember what it was.
I believe those, those dollars were, um, the projected cost out.
Okay.
I believe so. I believe.
Well, i- if, if, if we're sitting here watching our money and everything else, and we're talking about sidewalks, you know, as an enhancement to, uh, the appearance and for a few sa- and for our safety issues, I think that, uh, we have, uh, a better wa- means of spending our money on other things. We could turn around and spend our money on, uh, the library. We could turn around and spend our money on the, uh, extra officer that's been, uh, duly noted over the past several years that we should have. And, uh, some of the, uh, equipment that's, uh, be necessary for, uh, DPW. Also, the last and the biggest one I have is the, uh, condition of the roads. I mean, we're at a point where I made a recommendation for an extra quarter of a million dollars and, uh, for, for, uh, redoing the roads. And it seemed that I got a lot of, uh, uh, comments, but I didn't see anything, uh, uh, that officially came out of it with, uh, for support or non-support. So I just think, you know, asking for that kind of money right now is, uh, as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's too early. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just to be clear, we're, nobody's asking for that money right now. Um, and it's, it's not clear, uh, even if the town would be required for the full twenty percent match. It's a, um, funding program, um, a competitive funding program through the state. Thank you.
But, but if we, but, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if, if we turn around and commit to, uh, three quarters of a million dollars and we turn around and say, we'll pay twenty percent of it, is, that's the same thing as giving a contract and, and allocating that money to it because we're going to put in writing, yes, we will support the twenty percent.
So George, one thing to keep in mind is this board cannot make a future commitment for future select boards, a mandatory commitment for future select boards. So a board at that time would have to come back and say, yes, we agree with that and we support the idea of spending it, whether it be three years, five years, or seven years from now.
I, well, if, if that's the case, uh, Mr. Chairman, then I would just like to have the minutes. Uh, if, uh, Connor will talk to Ms. Cottle and have it reflected, shows that, uh, that commitment statement you just made is in the minutes. And then I will feel free to turn around and support, uh, your letter.
Okay. Select person air?
Uh, just for general information, we're gonna have to take care of the maintenance of the walkways. The future board will. So we have to invest in special equipment. And we have to pay for electricity. We have to do weed control in the summertime. So I'm, I'm not speaking against it. I'm just saying there, there's additional costs to this, more than is seen. Thank you.
Exactly. Yep.
So, um, just my feedback on it is, um, I don't, I'm, I'm bringing this forward as a representative of the, of the planning board, uh, personally as a selectman, I'm, I recognize there is a cost to us and the town on that, and it is pretty, it can be pretty substantial. Um, also, growing up, um, one of the expectations in the various towns that I've lived in is that you are always responsible for maintaining any sidewalk in front of your property. Um, the town may replace it at their cost, but you are responsible for maintaining it. Um, which I don't know if that's something that we could then put in, into our, whether it goes into our zoning language or where, but, um, if you're gonna have sidewalks, um, or people want to add sidewalks, I firmly believe that, uh, um, it becomes a burden of living in the more urban area. Um, so that's my, my general commentary on that. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you very much. Y- years ago, before I moved up here, and I'm talking about a lot of years ago, that was uh, how it was in, in two of the areas that I lived in, that you was responsible for, uh, the sidewalk in front of your house. And so when it snowed, you was responsible for taking the blower and blowing it off. And then when the snowplow came back and knocked, and knocked the, uh, cap off the top of thing and pushed the snow back again, you still had to go back out and do it. So I mean, it was a pain in the neck, but I, what you're saying, I agree with you. Thank you.
Yep. Any other comments from the select board? All right, um, Marcia would, I believe would like to add something, so allow Marcia to comment.
I'm sure. First thing I, I'd like to say is if you look back, and I guess Jeff Brand did an amazing job, um, with the letter he helped draft for, um, Jamie. Um, over the history of the town over the last twenty years and their desire to, um, develop their town center and the general village area and include sidewalks, that this isn't something that just popped up. This has been a long time community commitment to this type of development. And I just wanted to, to stress that. This is, this is not a recent turn of events. This is something that tens of thousands of dollars have been spent on, um, with master plans and, um, town center plans and, and whatnot. Um, and we do have a very, uh, growing population in that town ser- center area, which is actually quite, quite exciting, if you think. The only other thing I'd like to add is, um, is for, um, select board chairman now. Um, in regards to maintenance, um, and I did, uh, try and communicate, um, with, um, Mark, and he's sending us, he doesn't have a, you know, exact cost, but he did, we talked about, um, types of equipment. Um, and he thought one, if, if, and when this happened in the next few years, a Bobcat would be very handy to, to do sidewalks amongst other, like, year-round type of maintenance. So we, we, we are talking about that so that it wouldn't be a single piece of equipment. Um, and he was gonna get back to me basically on, um, some cost per mile on maintenance. The other thing is we're not talking about, um, miles and miles of sidewalk. We're really talking about just in our, our town center and our village district. Right, you know, pretty much down to about the middle school back up through, um, where, uh, Christmas dove just beyond that. Um, over the years, people may want to add more, but I, this isn't something that's gonna be widespread all around Barrington, would be my thought. This is very, very locate, you know, location specific. Um, and I guess that, unless anyone has any questions of me, that's pretty much what I wanted to, uh, to bring to everyone's attention.
Okay. Select person Bailey first, and then select person air?
Yes, I, I, I would like to, uh, say that, that when we did meet, we met downstairs in the gym, then we met, uh, over in the school. And I remember going to all those meetings, those lots of years ago on this, and, uh, uh, it's not, I was not saying that this is something that just popped up yesterday. I'm just saying that, uh, the commitment to do this is, uh, is good. We don't have to worry about that. But what I'm saying is the planning board, uh, should, uh, recommend that they consider, uh, changing some of the, uh, wording that they want on when they start doing some of your site work and what have you, to include sidewalks and what have you. They could start now, it would be part of the, uh, site plan when they develop, when they turn around and do an area. That's something that, that the chair should, could consider. I'm not saying for him to do it. That's another thing on it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Select person air?
Um, since I'm an observationist, um, when they do, um, the holiday thing down at the Kales and stuff, and then down there, um, at Christmas time, uh, and then all the communities up, it is a nightmare with traffic, police there and stuff, and like, not that lit area. But for me, the state's into a major improvement to that intersection for traffic. Wouldn't it be better to go off out of the intersection with sidewalks? Um, and, and better distance from traffic and safer. And that kind of goes with all, you know, attracting roads that's in our, past the plan and stuff, connectors. So that'd be like a, Nate, walking trails up and then you away from traffic, if they'd be concerned.
Select person Secoshia?
Okay, so here's my little, uh, little piece of, uh, I don't know, observation, since Stan's an observationist, I guess I'll be too. Um, so, you know, the sidewalks are great. Um, I, I can see, you know, I fully understand that, you know, that having a town center would be, would be great. And I think a lot of Barrington residents would like it. Um, the only thing that I can see that's an issue for me on this right now, because I mean, I know you have to start and spend some money, you know, to get started, to keep it rolling. But I would strongly want to take a look at, um, I forget the acreage that's out there for sale right now, but they want to put like eighty or ninety units in there. Um, I think some of the, the housing talk out there. I think if that, the area where we do this sidewalk is zoned commercially only, or, or mixed with commercial and residential, kind of like Dover, um, then I don't think these sidewalks are gonna be doing that much great if it's, you know, uh, strictly just residential. Because say if you get, you know, a couple of subdivisions in there, twenty, thirty apiece, um, then there's the sidewalks out of, of the streets that go from A to B. And then that doesn't allow people to come in, park, walk downtown, you know, um, go to shops and, you know, get their hair done and stuff. So that, that's the hard part that I'm trying to get by because there's so much mixed use that's available right in the center of town. Um, you know, if somebody come in, be like, I don't care, I'm putting in, you know, twenty-seven condos. And, you know, if they're allowed to do it, they're gonna do it. So I would put contingent on revisiting the zoning, for the area in the direct village before I could say yes.
Okay.
Could I, could I say something, Andy?
You could, Marcia, but I would like to look at this before I would call on you again.
Okay, thank you. No, that's okay.
Are there any other comments from the board? Um, I think I've gotten everybody's hand so far that was up. Select person air?
Dan has his hand up.
Yep, I got him.
So another thing, when the state redoes it, intersection, I don't see, let's see, do a big moving pack on. I don't see crosswalks working with a rotary. So there might be a pedestrian bridge. I don't know what, that's future decision.
All right. Any other commentary from the board? Marcia?
Sure, um, I can comment first on what Dan said. Um, the state, this will be a state project, so the design will be based upon basically what the state is looking for. Um, and I just wanted to, the zoning actually we have right now was based upon having mixed use, a mix of commercial and residential, also multifamily. That is what the, um, existing zoning is. It's, uh, particularly the village district is the only zoning district in town specifically, which allows for multifamily development. Um, town center allows for, um, residential on the second floor. So, um, what we have now is to encourage the density that residential actually brings in for that commercial base. Um, and, and then as you go out from town, from the dead center, then you, you'll have those sidewalks to support people to be able to, to walk within, within the general area of the town center and the village district.
Thank you. Um, I just, I have a general comment on it that I haven't made, and, uh, my general comment is, is to some regard, I think our, the way our zoning is set up, it's a, it's a little screwed up because it doesn't structure things in a way that really are driving the way we want to accomplish stuff. But that's a, that is a proposal to make in front of the planning board, and I will bring that up and have that discussion there. But with that, um, is there, Marcia, do you have something else you want to add, or did you just not put your hand?
No, I, I gotta figure out how to, oh, put my hand down. Sorry about that.
Click on your hand. Yep.
Is it down? Okay.
Um, so is there a motion for this? From the board? Anyone?
I, oh. I will make the motion contingent on the, uh, revisit to the planning board about the zoning in there. Cause I mean, Marcia did say it was mixed use, um, that's in there. I mean, the multifamily kind of scares me because somebody can go in and put a bunch of multifamilies in and then have no commercial. I'm just trying to think about building a town from the bottom up. And I mean, there would be restrictions for the buildings, you know, is there gonna be parking on the street? But I think we're just going ahead for a vote to, to talk to DOT, correct?
It's a letter of support.
All right. Is there?
Um, it's, it's not a final decision, but I'm, I'm in support of it because, you know, if Barrington's gonna grow and we're gonna keep it small on the inside, um, be what they call a main street town. And then, you know, if people live on the outside, that's fine by me. And I think that's, you know, not spreading everything out all over. Um, keeps it nice and quaint.
Okay. I have a second from select person air. Roll call, vote?
There, aye.
George?
Yeah, George, aye.
Secoshia, aye.
Napa. All right. Moving on, um, select persons reports, starting with select person air?
Um, Conservation didn't meet last week. Um, and then Townland was gonna be saved, but they canceled. And the library is tomorrow. I am pre-vertured yet, so I'll give a report in a week.
All right. Select person Bailey?
I had no meetings at all. Thank you.
Select person Secoshia?
The boss are going great. Um, they have been dealing with some of the COVID crisis and handling it well. Um, as far as, uh, the school goes, um, eight days till Jesse comes back in the hot seat. Um, Sarah has done a great job. And then, uh, what else did we go over? That's about it. That's, that's all I can, uh, say. I talked to her today. She's happy, uh, for Jesse's return.
Very good. Um, I have a planning board meeting tomorrow. So, uh, that is the only thing that I have, um, that is new. Um, is there, uh, oh, oh, I guess we'll move on from there. Public comment. Um, this will be the second public comment. So I will start a thirty-second timer and, uh, we will give people a chance to make comment.
Andy, I'd like to speak.
Select person Secoshia, it's your three minutes.
All right, here we go. So, uh, before the election, I, uh, I said I did want to get paid, um, after reviewing the paperwork. Um, yeah, it's a little bit more than I bargained for. So what I'm gonna do personally is donate my personal money, uh, for the same amount to the, the food pantry to hold my end of the bargain up.
Very good. Select person air?
I refuse to take bribes. I refuse to get paid from the town. I didn't want to go any direction and fill any paperwork. I would, and a principle.
Are there any other public comments? George?
Yes, I also saw that book they asked us to fill up. And so I just turned it back into Connor and let him take care of it there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Maybe one day I'll write a novel.
All right. So, um, Connor, are you seeing any public comment requests coming? So I will end public comment. It has been far more than thirty seconds, um, with a minute of our jabber been there. Uh, any need for a non-public?
Yes, for, uh, reputation and legal.
You're killing me, Smalls.
It's gonna be quick.
All right, um.
What's the law?
Motion to, um, enter non-public, seconded by Jim Secoshia. Will we be coming back to report out on anything?
We'll be coming back to close the meeting. I don't suspect we'll have any information to share publicly.
All right. Alright, very good, I'll see everyone in non-public.
God dang, George beat me again.
I told you I got a fast new computer.
Yeah.
You gotta go see Will.
Check.
Yep.
The lights around his house don't work, but he's got a new computer.
That's right.
It uses less electricity to my bill savings.
Hey.
He's got, he's got.
That bill, we could talk about a solar installation.
George, George has got to keep that money in his pocket so he can go donate it to the Indians.
Ain't nothing wrong, they can tickle me all they want.
Hell boy.
He, I don't think he's probably been to a casino in a while.
I've been a lot since February.
Yeah. All right, we have a quorum.
All right.
Three.
So, um, welcome back. Are you recording?
Yes.
Okay, welcome back to the public side of the meeting after coming out of non-public. Um, we don't have anything to announce at this point, so I'm looking for a motion to seal the minutes from non-public indefinitely.
So moved.
Second, roll call vote.
Aye or aye.
Aye or aye.
Secosh aye.
Napa.
Real quick, Chair Knapp, um, I will just, and we'll bring this up at the next select board meeting, but the, uh, select board has committed to, uh, reviewing, going back through, and reviewing the non-public minutes that have been previously sealed, uh, to see if circumstances have changed, which would allow those, um, minutes to be made public. Uh, and so once the COVID-19 circumstances allow it, or we implement a way that, uh, the select board can do that safely, um, not meeting in person, um, the select board is committed to doing that, uh, to try to maintain the openness and transparency that they're dedicated to.
Thank you. I was about to say the same thing and you beat me to it. All right. Um, is there anything else?
Motion.
Second, the motion to adjourn, roll call vote.
Aye or aye.
Aye or aye. Secosh has got its hand up.
Secosh aye.
He was, he was kind of frozen there for a minute, but that's, we got him and Napa. Everyone have a wonderful evening.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.